And we've got a full house today. It's good to see a lot of people here. So we'll get right into the public session. So if you'd stand with me for the question.
Question. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hatch, could you lead us in the intention, please?
Sure. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we are thankful for this day that you have given us. God, we ask that you be with our council members tonight as they discuss and make plans for the betterment of our community that we all love and call home. Be with us, be praying, Christ, and be praying. Amen.
Please be seated. All right, first is our special presentation request. So we have members of the Tazewell High School DECA Club. I understand you're going on a trip. So if someone want to come up and... Come on up.
Hi, I'm Patricia Lynn. I'm their leading teacher at Tazewell High School. And this year, we took 24 students to Virginia Beach to compete at the state level. And these two girls here, I'll let them introduce themselves, are going to be competing in Atlanta. Next Friday, we leave. So go ahead and introduce yourself, girls.
My name's Caitlin Church.
And my name's Haley Church.
Yes, they're sisters. And they did a research project with Heritage Hall. And they had to develop ways to improve the employee experience in a post-COVID environment. So it was a real-world problem, hands-on, and they did a fantastic job. And then our next two ladies that are attending with us are Tara and Jane. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I was supposed to say that.
My name's Tara Silver.
And I'm Jane Ruth.
And they qualify to attend the Leadership Academy as Rising Officers for next year in our DECA program. So we're very excited to see what they learn and what they bring back to us.
Excellent. Well, nice to meet you all. So I understand you're looking for a donation for travel expenses.
What does our grant line? Is it $200?
$200. I ain't nothing to steal from the gas.
I'll make a motion.
So ready? So a motion, we have a second. All in favor or any discussion?
Yes. But the grant line is at $200.
Fifty to $200.
Fifty to $200. Y'all want to get out of Tazewell?
What do you suggest?
$600. I'm sorry, I was looking for something special.
You have a motion, a second.
I'm $200.
You got to do something with it. I'm not saying you have to. You just got to do something. We've got a motion, a second, okay?
So I guess the motion is going to carry for $200 after discussion?
$600.
That's our grant line.
Yeah.
I just think we have to stick to our grant line.
Yeah. And that's for one to 10 participants.
Right.
Glad to help you. Just when y'all leave?
We leave next Friday.
Next Friday?
Yeah, we're going to be gone through Thursday for the following week.
I'm sure Councilman Fox will accept additional donations.
I probably would do that. And I hope my council will do the same. I pray that you have a good trip.
We appreciate it. And the girls have been fundraising. You know, they've been really working hard. And we're super proud of them. We almost make them, almost.
So all in favor of approval of $200? Space, everybody say aye. All of us, space, everybody say nay? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stick around or you can leave. It's up to you.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. You're very excited.
This is pretty exciting.
Thanks, guys.
All right. So next on the agenda is the 25th anniversary of 911. We have Randy Ann Davis and Jonathan Hankins. Come up, please.
Hello. I'm Captain Randy Ann Davis. I am the Director of Tazewell County 911 and Emergency Communications. Captain Jonathan Hankins.
And Captain Operations at Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for letting us come tonight. We're really excited. Every year, the second week of April is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And this year is a milestone for Tazewell County. Our 911 is, you know, everyone's 911. All towns, everyone in the county. This is our 25th anniversary. In 1997, on April 23rd, we took our first 911 call. Of course, that day, there was more people. Actually, I actually have some of the newspaper articles. That day, there were more calls. People just seeing if 911 was real and if it was murder. And like, oh, gosh, is it here? We have one dispatcher we're recognizing tomorrow as well. And she has been here the entire time. She started actually like in February and before 911 took their first call in April. Our 911 center actually took all their training initially from Mercer County. They had 911 in Mercer County just before Tazewell County. And that's where the closest instructors were. But to give you a little history, is anyone familiar where the Piggyback Cafe used to be on Main Street or where Seven is now? That's where, if you didn't know, that's where our first 911 center was. We had very primitive beginnings. We had a... Our consoles were made out of plywood. We had one dispatch console that was all push-button and had nothing electronic like it is today. We had two phones. And we had four 911 lines. And I think four admin lines. We had no caller ID. We had no mapping that pops up and tells you where they are. You had to get all the directions. Then you either had to look in a map book, which I'm sure maybe Dave remembers from being out maybe years ago. The officers had them. And it was a big book. And it had basically wrap numbers, unless you wrote in the addresses.
That's when you called to go to a phone booth. That's when the phone booths are out.
Yep. You still had the phone booths then, too.
We had to explain to a lot of people that it's not for... You had to call somebody up. Sweetheart, my, why? It's to 911. Answer your call. So we had a lot of phone booths there back then.
We had dispatch... 911 and the Sheriff's Office at that beginning was separate. 911, of course, like I said, is up above the Piggyback. Sheriff's Office was over in the old jail. And that's where their dispatch was. How they talked together was over an intercom. We didn't have the sheriff's channel. All they had was fire rescue and the town PD. They had the town PD on a separate mobile radio underneath the console. And they had a little mic. Of course, all the phones, they picked up a handset just like we used to at home. And that's all you had to communicate. In 2005, we moved over to the water plant on Blackwell Street, if anyone's familiar. We moved upstairs. We went up on the third floor. Only problem, we didn't have elevators. So it was forty steps all the way up.
That's a lot.
Much better, much better location, though. We had more rooms. We moved up to three dispatchers. Plus, we have a chief dispatcher. We have a director, which we always have a director. But expand a little further. We now have... We still had our handsets. But we now had six 911 lines, four admin lines. And we had a map that popped up. Didn't show a whole lot, but it showed a little bit. Wireless calls, you had anywhere from maybe a mile or three miles that you could maybe find where someone was at. In 2010, we moved into our current location, which is out of the total junior high with the Sheriff's Office. We now have three different kinds of mappings that come up. We actually have headsets and we can talk. We can move around. The dispatchers can talk on the radio through the headset, as well as over the phone. Our mapping and our caller ID is all state-of-the-art. We have several new things, like for the schools. We have partnered with the county school boards. All of our schools have radios, as well as a new app called the Panic Button. And the school board and the... Excuse me, the school teachers and different staff have the app. And everything's geofenced. So if they would have a call, an emergency of some type in, say, Tazewell Elementary School, they would activate their app. It goes directly... There's not even any dialing, 911. You push a one button and it comes right into us. It shows us a geofenced area of the school. It's going to show us where that teacher is. And then either they can talk to us, if it's safe to do so, or they can actually text or chat with us over the phone. So technology has really, really changed. We would like to invite you all up. Tomorrow is our open house from 3 to 7. And we're also recognizing, if you would like to come, ready? From 2 to 3, we're going to recognize our dispatcher, which is Christina Chanel. And she's the one that's been with us for 25 years.
Wow.
Also like to recognize, I have some of my dispatchers and deputies here. Appreciate that man here.
Say to 911 operators, they get the full stat from a caller that calls. And it's not good. It's really scary. It's bad. Plus, when their deputy's on the road or a police officer's on the road answering this call, they don't hear from it. It scares them. And then automatically send back to... Soon as possible. And I appreciate it, 911.
One other bit of technology we have to share is our Rio's Light app, which is a new technology that we're just starting to use a little bit. You can actually... Of course, you have to get the permissions and stuff through the center and everything. But you can upload the Rio's app. And it's called Rio's Light. And the sheriff has actually talked to our 911 center from New York. He picked up his phone. He opened up the app. He did push the talk. And he actually talked to Corporal Christian that's sitting in the back there over the radio. And he was standing right next to some New York officers, as well as Captain Hankins here. So we're real excited. Of course, you have to have cell service. And we know our county isn't 100% covered by cell service. We live in the mountains. But it looks to be a nice, exciting future for, you know, for us to be just being able to talk over our phones instead of the radio.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's great.
Great. And I comment. I, you know, I started way back years ago. Talked about all those dispatching centers and stuff. And it has greatly improved. And, you know, the dedication from the men and women who do this job is not thanked enough. And I worked with Cindy and Randy Ann and some of the others over the years. And I think they do deserve a great thank you from the public and also very valuable.
Thank you. We are... I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak on behalf of law enforcement. Because these dispatchers, they're the true first responders. They're the ones that receive the initial 911 call of that mother that's in labor that doesn't have a way to hospital. They have to talk to him through childbirth. They're the ones that receive the 911 calls of the fatal car accident. They receive the call of a child not breathing. You know, us law enforcement officers, we have that information before we get there. They're the ones that get in the shock of that mother on the other end of the line screaming. They have to deal with that day in and day out. Those dispatchers, they're the ones who summon the police, fires, rescues, and... Law enforcement. They're the ones that are heard, but seldom seen. That's the true purpose. You know, they have a tremendous responsibility day in and day out that people don't notice. Our lives are in their hands. They're very special to me. And they're so important. They have so many responsibilities at so many different times. The town of Tazewell could have maybe a car chase going on. We may have a shooting going on. They have one room. They handle all of this. And they're just so underappreciated. And I can't thank them enough for everything they do. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for keeping us safe, keeping the community safe. And hope you have a good week. Thank you.
And I just want to apologize for all the times I've sat on my phone and...
I've been there.
I apologize.
I would like to say I'm very thankful. The only time I've had to call 911 is for a control burn, so.
Well, thank you guys very much. Next on the agenda is a town representative needed for Board of Trustees, Mr. Donnie Yates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank y'all for putting me on the agenda for tonight. This is my fifth council meeting so far. And I just want to say one thing before I get started. This will be the fourth one that have recognized the young people in our community. We need that. I agree. Like to talk to you about the Tazewell County Fair. This year is going to be a special year for us. It'll be the 150th anniversary of the Tazewell County Fair. And for any tech fans in here tonight, Tazewell County Fair was started the same year Virginia Tech was founded.
Also the year Concord University was founded.
Really? But we're hoping this will be a really special year for us. We are excited about it. We've got a few things booked already. We were able to get a mobile museum for the Commonwealth of Virginia. It'll be at the fair three days this week. And we've got some attractions booked already. But we're working hard every day trying to get others booked. But we want to make sure that this... That we can do the best we can to make this a true Tazewell County Fair. And what we're asking is for y'all to pick someone. It could be one of y'all, you, or just someone in the community that's active in the community. And it would be volunteer. We're very frugal. But, you know, it's someone that we want to have meetings with. And then this person can come back and relate to you what we had told them. And keep the town in the know of what's going on. And we really do recommend suggestions. If you have any, please give those to your representative. I'll be calling in probably about another month or so, calling the town to see if you have someone yet and try to get the meetings started and worked out. But like I said, we are really looking forward to this year. We've been working hard. 2020, we didn't get to have the fair because of COVID. But we are still hanging on to our record of being the longest continuous-running county fair in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have... One thing we have booked already is Cody Wickline. Was a finalist on The Voice, I think, a year or so ago. We have him booked for this year. For country and western fans ought to enjoy that. We're still working on our gospel talent. But that's basically where we're at. And we wholeheartedly would like each town's participation in this and make everybody aware of what's going on. You know, I was shocked when I went to the fair with the work it goes into. It's... I have one gentleman from Florida right now. I've been playing a ton of tag with for two months off. That is... But it's a labor of love. If you live and take from a community, you need to get back to your community, sir. But that's all I have unless y'all have any questions.
How often do you meet?
Pardon?
How often do you meet?
Once a month.
Once a month.
On what day?
Tuesday night, same night as y'all's, I believe.
Okay. Just wondering what time commitment the individual would need to...
I wouldn't think more. Hour, hour and a half at most.
Okay.
So Donnie, you're missing your board meeting right now.
Pardon?
You're missing your board meeting right now.
No, I was out of town this week.
Y'all called y'all.
It's just... We'll have it next week.
Well, we'll try to come up with a name to submit and talk to them and try to get someone within the month. That's what I was...
Okay. Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Recognize Employee Accomplishments Manager Day.
All right. Every time I get an opportunity for a member of my staff, which by the way, goes the extra mile to make me even look... I ain't even saying look good. I'm very proud of them and accomplishments they have. But for the last several months, I've got two employees, Lee Anne and also Tracy, who are working in front of office that have been taking the program. Weld and Cooper, for those of you who ran out of memory, Weld and Cooper is a branch of UVA. It's a subsidiary of UVA. But the School of Continuum and Professional Studies recognizes Lee Anne Reagan of the town of Tazewell has successfully completed the requirements for certification and is hereby awarded the title of Master Governmental Treasurer the 15th day of November, 2021. All right, now, you got five minutes to do your speech.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Also Tracy Lewis, who also works from the front office, has successfully completed the requirements for certification and hereby awarded the title of Master Governmental Deputy Treasurer 15th day of November, 2021. Good job.
It's always good when we can recognize employees and people of our town in general. But great job. So new business recognition, unfortunately none. Next is the approval of the council meeting minutes for March 8, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Sure. Motion?
You get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of minutes? Space, everybody say aye.
Aye.
All of us, space, everybody say nay? All right. Then last month's meeting minutes are approved. Next is the approval of financial statements and financial reports for March 2022. Need a motion to approve?
Approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval? Space, everybody say aye.
Aye.
All of us, space, everybody say nay? All right. Financial statement, financial report approved. Next is the committee and conference updates. We'll go get a planning commission committee update by Councilmember Davis.
All right. The planning commission met last Monday. We had a pretty short session. We talked about, there was a proposal to come forward to do a vacate in the alley. And that is going to be discussed later on in our agenda. The planning commission approved everything and suggested that it come on up to council to be set for a public hearing. We also discussed tiny houses. And in the tiny houses, I believe that they are required to meet building code. So, and we don't believe that we need to take any action to define tiny houses in our specific code. Since they are required to meet building code, they were just any property that could have multiple properties.
Dwelling units.
Yeah, multiple dwelling units. They could have tiny houses if they want. But it would have to fit in with the zoning requirements. And Chris gave us an update on the town annex property, which I believe we're talking about a little later, too. That was it.
Any questions? Okay. So next we're moving to unfinished business. Mayor today is going to give us an update on the recreational access grant.
Yeah. Mayor, that's discussed during the work session. I'd like to remove that and take it up at the next meeting. We did open up the... It's Friday. But unfortunately, we have not got around to tallying those finals, making recommendations yet. So I'd like to move to...
Fair enough. So next, we're going to get an update on all the additional projects.
Yeah. Just want to point out a couple that we're working on. Of course, the ball field. Everybody's aware that we've spent a lot of time on the ball field. And I've got dozens of phone calls of appreciation to cancel making that decision to do that. It's really looking good out there. The fields, their shells will be redone. We're putting some money towards completely revamping both fields, but the weather is...
So I got a message from the guy today, starting on the 18th.
Okay. So hopefully, we originally had the first of the month. And unfortunately, the weather just pushed it back. So they didn't need to, too. It's like riding a roller coaster, running around the field. Rainy, if you've been by there lately, you can tell that there's a lot of changes going on right there. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, both of those buildings that are remaining now will be down. So they're going to be way ahead of schedule. Way, way. It's a 120-day project. And the only reason we did that was to give them an opportunity to capitalize on the assets there and also drop our price. So, but they're going to be way, way ahead of schedule. And that's all I've got for right now. You've got it in front of you. T and L reports on all the other projects. If you got any questions, say.
Tell you, I tried to take my kids out to the rainy lot just so they could watch it. Neither one of them wanted to go. I wanted to go and watch it.
So now we're going to our new business section. So as well was mentioned earlier, the studying the joint public hearing for the alley closure request.
Thank you, Dad. Okay. You've got it in your packet there. It's a plain view GIS drawing of where the alley is located. I'm sure most of you are pretty much familiar with it.[1728.62] I'm sure most of you are pretty much familiar with it. It's right off the riverside. It's a small section of alley that we've looked at and haven't been able to identify any complications or reasons why we wouldn't close that alley. Typical process for alley closures is to give each landowner on adjacent side the opportunity to purchase the property based on tax assessed value. In this situation, you're going to have the same landowner who will also be responsible for paying that price, you know, a tax assessed value. Um, thank the Commonwealth. I know the town code book also establishes that there must be a committee designed and put together. We have not done that. That committee is usually a building official, public work director, chief of police, to go out and look at it, evaluate it based on their profession and what they do, see if there's any complications there. So with that being said, I think Chris is looking for, coming out here. Chris, y'all looking to go to public hearing next month?
Yes.
So, 10 May?
Yeah. If you have any questions about it, of course, uh, we'll answer them, uh, but the planning commission has reviewed it, looked at it and dug pretty deep into it and obviously pushed it to the town council and proceed.
Do you need a motion to go?
Proceed and go to public hearing. In between now and the public hearing, I will create that committee and line up the code book.
Okay, so can I get a motion to schedule a joint public hearing for the alley closure request for 10 May?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? All right, so to schedule for 10 May, next council meeting. Uh, next is the funding recommendation. Manager Day?
Okay, I've been begging at 5 o'clock for years to buy a laptop. I remember that. Well, anyway, you know, as all, as all of you are aware, we, they, they did due diligence and were able to find one that they feel like exceeds the capabilities of, and, uh, they will actually be going down tomorrow. Is that right, Chief?
Tomorrow, yeah.
I mean, what Thursday, isn't it tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday. Thursday. That's what TJ said.
Okay, well, but anyway, they'll be going down to pick it up. I want to talk to you a little bit about funding. Uh, cost on it was 180K. Um, county, I haven't got an official notice. I got some e-mail, but I think the county is going to contribute over half the cost of that, which is $100,000 to go toward it and obviously, uh, obviously the county would want to keep up the same relationship we have now in place right now, which if we ever get a call, regardless of where it, where it's at, or backup anywhere at the county, we'll do that. So my recommendation is that if we don't finance this, we, we actually, uh, pay cash for it, we utilize 100,000. And again, I want to echo, I don't have any official documentation, it's just my understanding. And then use the, uh, the funds available in the general fund, the $80,000 of ARPA to completely pay off this fee, figure it out and complete paid off. And if you recall, council actually voted to put a portion of funds toward investment and that could be the second tranche of the budget.
I'll make a motion to do exactly what you just said.
I'll save that motion, you save the 100,000 to the county. Perhaps what my, my question is, can we do that when we don't have a definitive amount? I would do it and if it doesn't come through, I'll just, we'll, we'll reevaluate it. Uh, if I don't, I'm going to have to go to a bank. So.
No offense.
No, I proceed. I proceed. If my understanding is wrong, I'll talk to Southern District Supervisor before long.
Maybe, maybe it could be 110 or.
Hey, but I don't know if that's official yet, but again, it's, it's my understanding from some pretty good sources, so. Uh, and again, if it's not, we'll back up and be ready for another recommendation next month.
All in favor of approving spending money, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? All right, so the funding recommendation is approved. Next is a resolution of support by department emergency response across Tassle County. Manager Day?
Yeah, I've got a resolution here. This resolution just pretty much adds to the teamwork, the relationship we've already got with the county. Uh, we don't have anything in place right now, but I can assure you that if I were a representative of the board of supervisors, they have constituents all over the county and they need to be sure that they're spending funds, so I think the resolution is great. Whereas the town of Tassle understands the necessity that a well-equipped fire department in order to adequately address emergency situations when called on. Whereas the town of Tassle desires the willingness and cooperation of other fire departments in Tassle County when called upon to help assist in emergency situations inside the political jurisdiction of the town of Tassle. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby commits to responding with our platform truck and any other emergency equipment across Tassle County when called upon to support other existing fire departments in need. Adopted this 21st day, 12th day of April, 2022. Got a little dyslexic there, didn't you? I did. But I did. Go ahead.
And on that motion, will it be somebody at the fire station to answer calls here in town if the fire?
Yeah, we'll just send out like one crew to help mutual aid, obviously the lighter truck if they need it, but we'll keep a crew here.
Oh, right. That's.
We have a truck that we specifically sent out to the county when they requested and we've, we've always sent our platform truck when they needed it, so really nothing's changed.
We're just.
I'll make a motion.
I guess, all in favor of approving the resolutions, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? All right, resolution's approved.
Now, if for some reason that $100,000 doesn't come through, I'm bringing that resolution back. This is a agreement that's already in place by the way, it's just hasn't been updated.
Right. So, uh, next Chief Mills, go discuss a permit application.
Yeah, this is something that we've been needing for a while. Um, I've researched several different locations around it and asked if they had a permit to kind of give us control of what went on on Main Street, mainly as what this is for in the past, and I think Brad can testify that we have had people that have been very disruptive during these. I think this kind of controls the atmosphere and who we have on Main Street participating. Uh, this is something that, uh, I had Brad look over, I think Todd, and then I had Ted Brad look over and this seems to tick all the boxes that we need. And of course it might need something down the road that we need to change, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory on what is asked of the person that's asking close to street.
So Tassle Day each time they have a, we need.
They'll have to do them and we'll give you a stack of them.
And I sent, uh, this to Vanessa today and I told her if she had any questions and I'll try to get with her probably tomorrow and go over her and, and explain why we did this and if there's any questions, I'll try to get her answers.
Excellent. I need a motion to approve the permit application.
One thing I'd like to discuss is, and I think we, we discussed it briefly before, is possibly putting a list of the vendors and the nature of their business that they might have at these events because we may have, you know.
Sure.
That may be beneficial to us in other ways, uh, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Sales and.
Meals tax.
Meals tax and whatnot. I don't know if that.
No, that's a, that's a great idea and I'm not sure if Tassle Day's got a protocol set up for that yet, but I'll, I'll talk to Tassle Day. Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great idea and it has been brought up. I can tell you years ago, uh, back in 2012, 2013, the idea was to get vendors on Main Street.
Right.
It wasn't any restaurants and I purposely waived any fees or cost factor in hand just to, and we conceded that, so yeah, that is great.
Excellent.
I'll make a motion for Chief to proceed on with his application permit.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the permit applications, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by, space there by say a nay? All right, Chief. I think we move forward. So next is the resolution of honor for Mr. James Baldwin.
May I? I'm there. I know you like to do more.
I can, I've got it.
All right. Go right there.
So this is a resolution of honor. Whereas James A. Jim Baldwin, longtime employee of the Cumberland Plateau Planning District Commission, has successfully held multiple positions within CPP DC for over 50 years, starting in February 1972. And whereas Jim Baldwin grew up in southwest Virginia and was a graduate of Honaker High School and completed his education career studying at the College of William and Mary. Whereas in July 2006, Jim Baldwin assumed the position of Executive Director at CPP DC, serving as, serving the counties of Buchanan, Dickerson, Russell and Tassle. And whereas Jim Baldwin's accomplishments are extensive, including but not limited to clean, clean drinking water projects, high-speed broad, broadband internet and wireless connectivity, along with downtown improvement projects and much, much more. Whereas Jim Baldwin has served on countless numbers of boards and authorities and whereas Jim Baldwin's service to the region can be seen all across the CPP DC operating area. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael F. Hoops, Mayor of the town of Tassle, with the town council, do hereby commend Jim Baldwin for his 50 years of service to the Cumberland Plateau Planning District Commission and to its localities in southwest Virginia. Adopted this 12th day of April, 2022.
That is being approved. I move that we adopt the resolution to honor Jim Baldwin's retirement.
You get a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? All right, resolution is approved. So next is, uh, annexation discussion, manager day.
Yeah, just want to give a quick update. I know several of you ask me about the annexation. I can assure you that Aaron and I have been in great communication. I've actually spoken more with Aaron in his time in office than I have, uh, well, anyway. But it's going very well, um, and he's doing due diligence on the information that we've given him. He's got all the information that we have, uh, addresses, names, et cetera. And, uh, he's doing what he needs to do on his end to talk to his constituents and looking forward to working with him over the next circle once to have it finalized, have it have it established, yeah.
Excellent. So is there any miscellaneous items? So didn't see anything.
Oh, we added that one.
Oh, yeah, so we need to vote for a public hearing on budget approval. Would we want to do that on 10 May also?
Yes.
Okay. I'll vote that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying public hearing to discuss budget approval on May 10th, space there by, or space there by say a nay?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? All right, so that is through. So next is everyone's lame public comment. Nobody. So finally, any council member comments?
No. I don't have any groundhogs.
So, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn, guys? So who? I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, space there by say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed, space there by say a nay? I get adjourned.